I could call to order the school board regular business meeting for June 9, 2025. Tiffany, can you please do your role?
Zidic, Valdez.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Aldridge.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Brophy.
Here.
Shania and Michelle, your last meeting.
Here.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening, everybody. And as Tiffany mentioned, we're going to be acknowledging Michelle Seberg's last day with us. So we're starting with Saber Pride. First item is item 3.1. And we're recognizing Michelle Seberg with her last meeting for the school board. And I had the pleasure of interviewing Michelle along with some other great candidates. It's always, it's always fun to interview candidates for the student school board membership because they're always so impressive and inspiring. And Michelle was no exception. I was just blown away by her passion, first and foremost. That's the first word that always comes to mind for me, for Michelle. And then her excitement and her energy to commit to this role. And Michelle, you've, you've just seen the work you've done over the last couple of years. It's been just such a joy having you among us and providing your insight in the student perspective. And yeah, I just, I wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
I'll just, yeah, passion is about right, you know? It's amazing for all the student school board members that you have. Your resumes are better than all of ours. You know, inadequate at times, but I, I know that for a fact, because you've mentioned it, that you actually wish you'd been able to do more. And like even like, oh, I wish I could do this for a couple more years. I mean, if you would have just not graduated on Saturday, you might have been able to have that opportunity. But it just, over the last two years, it's just, it's been a great pleasure to be able to be on the board with you sitting there.
About a while.
Yeah. All right. Next on our agenda is item 3.2, Minnesota Green Step Schools. And we have several members here to present. Ed Loisel, A.D. Ford, I apologize, I should have. Jonae Pullman-Brigham. I'll see, is that Zalmane? So please, if you'd like to come up and present, welcome. And please share with the board your roles and we're happy to have you here.
So a couple of years ago, David Wallace, he called me on his fishing in Montana. You have to do this. So, okay, so we got the ball rolling. And what Green Step Schools is pretty much an extension of our pathway, you know, the environmental pathway. And so I just thought it'd be a nice fit for what we're doing to be a larger member, as it says on the screen, K-12 there. And we were, I think officially, one of the first to be part of this project. And we'll talk more about it. But our goal is kind of the extension of our sun club, Students Understanding Nature. And so what we're hoping is just to keep building that kind of environmental ethical concept as we move forward, so that these future generations can understand better decisions of what they have to do. And that's been our ultimate goal.
And I got the opportunity from Ed Loisel because I took one of his classes and got introduced to this project and had the opportunity to be able to work. Getting Shakopee has really been a part of Green Step School. And my part was to write a project story and make some educational video. And that was really exciting. And also like had the opportunity to work with Jonae, was really exciting working with her. Yeah, at least nine weeks and yeah, really exciting. And I was able to get a lot of people to join our green team, including Tiffany and our students. And yeah, and sun club also.
So it worked nice. And I teach a class called Environmental Solutions. So it's the cornerstone or capstone kind of of the pathway. And so Addie was a great person. She's going to go into, so if you get a chance to watch her video, it's awesome. And it just goes into much more depth of what we're doing. So it was nice to see her take this where we had to get through some different organizational requirements. And she did that to a T and was professional with it. So it's kind of seeing kind of full circle. Our goal of what the academy can do, so it was really nice to see this process in action.
All right. Well, it's so nice to be here and excited that you're moving forward to the next step. Yeah, as we've mentioned, Shakopee was the first school district to pass a school board resolution, officially joining Green Step, which is one of the very first best practices that happened on the way to getting the first level of recognition. And it's not easy being first and we really appreciated your, you know, pioneering in that direction. That helped inspire those various schools who then they passed a resolution. And they're not a Green Step One school, you're almost a Green Step One school. I think you've met all the requirements. We're just waiting for the right time to celebrate. And, you know, Green Step Schools was designed with the, oh, the challenge of doing anything on top of what you're already doing in schools. So we know that sometimes efforts are started by a teacher, a grassroots effort, or by a committee. And these things can stop and start. And we really want to meet schools where they are. And so we hold your place for you. So the resolution that was passed in 2021, that was great. That progress is never lost. And now you're taking to the next step. And I was so pleased that you, you know, decided, you know, students can lead this. We don't have to wait for, you know, there's a lot of ways to do this. And more even across other schools, we're seeing youth leadership is a really powerful way to move this forward. And I was very timid with you and Addie over those many weeks. And we met weekly, I think, for quite a while, working through. And so at this point, Shakopee not only has the resolution, but also has formed the green team that you organized. And that third element to get to the Green Step One recognition is to write a project story, which Addie did. And we're just really excited to welcome you to the program.
I think it would be a good place to showcase. So we're doing the fourth grade day. I don't know, maybe I can mail out a photo of Mr. Schlepper. But we two video together, it was an awesome display. I'll share it with you. So that's kind of the, kind of old, old school sequence. And I'll try to find out environmental lines.
Chair Smith, I'll make sure that reference or that resource Mr. Loisel mentioned gets put in our Friday wrap because it is a great video that was put together by Mr. Schlepper.
Addie, can you tell us a little more about your project? Like what your favorite part was?
My favorite part was the process of working with you. I really enjoyed it. And yeah, because I had more to go into like the production. So and that's just like my passion to really get involved like much deeper. And also creating our school to the next step, which is Green Step School. And also through the environment and the ideas of Green Step School, which is giving me the passion in me, yeah.
Can you give us an example of something that you've done that was us like taking sustainability in our district to the next level of what we were already doing to be qualified for this program? I think you led environmental education for a long time. And all those stories aren't even in the program yet. That's probably going to get you to step two pretty quickly, but you'll be able to document that. But what step one is about, the step one recognition is laying the foundations for success. So from the, all the focus groups we had, designing a program and said, you really need support from the top. That's why the school board resolution is correct, is that you're getting that first award. It's so that, you know, the attention of the leadership and the, you know, people don't go off and start a project that isn't aligned with the school district goals. And then a green team was also, from our research, shown to be an important infrastructure for moving forward with regular meetings. So we committed to meeting at least three times a year. And so you've done much more than the step one even acknowledges. Although I think these video gives a sort of preview of more stories to be told. Yeah.
I think that was always the hard thing for me is how do you kind of wrap it together? And I think this is such a great way to wrap all of the same things we're doing on that environmental pathway. And then be able to display it to other districts and other people. And then maybe build from other schools' ideas. So we're trying to keep moving forward. Our students understanding each, we meet every Monday through the year. So having those meetings is never a problem. So I think this is, gives us kind of a platform to display what we're trying to do, changes that kids are bringing to the school as far as sustainability and value issues.
I might could just add to that about the storytelling. We could have had a step one that was just a compliance document. I did this and I proved it and everything. But we purposely designed the program so that as you document what you've done, you do it in a way that informs other schools. So the project story form asks about barriers and champions and a timeline so that other schools come in from it. So actually by documenting what you've done, that is stepping above this well. And it's really about schools inspiring each other and all friendly competition. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Next on our agenda is item four, the consideration the agenda is presented.
Joe, I had an idea. Please try item 6.1. Then we won't have to look for another finance director, right?
I believe it's true.
Let me get a sign. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Brophy and a second by Aldridge. Any discussion? Scene done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item five, public comment. This is the time where members of the public can participate in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to 2.5 minutes. The sign up for public comment has been conducted online and in person prior to this evening's meeting. No one has signed up for public comment prior to this evening's meeting. We will move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, next on our agenda is item seven, donations approval.
Consent.
Do we, oh, how did I miss that? Well, you were joking about taking six out of there.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I don't like.
I'm going to blame Tim because I can't, my inability to read this. All right. I will correct myself. Next on our agenda is item six, consent agenda, consent items. And we have several personnel items here, including official recognition of Bill Manassi's resignation as well as other actions.
Motion to approve the consent items as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Valdez. Any discussion?
If Bill was here, I would say, you know, acknowledge him with all the hard work that he's done. But I'll save it for, for leaving when he's here.
Sounds good. Seeing if there's no other discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item seven, a resolution for donations approval. You can see the donations on the screen there. I'll make a motion to approve the donations. Second. A motion by Aldridge and a second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Tiffany, can please do the roll?
Zidic?
Here, or yes?
Valdez?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Aldridge?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brophy?
Yeah. Resolution passes. Come to the information section over me. Actually, we have two. For this, the first information section over me. Item 8.1 is summer school. And my. And here to present is Eric Service, the TLC principal.
Welcome, Eric. Thank you. Tiffany Smith, and you're the board. I'm here to provide you a brief update of summer programming for 2025. And before I begin, I do, I do want to mention, because I think last time this year I forgot to just give some shout outs. Big context of this is our planning starts way back in December. And it takes an entire extensive team to kind of get summer programming off the ground. And so at the end, you'll see kind of a slide of all those people that need that type of recognition. And I want to thank Tiffany and her team with Communications. I remember, I forgot to mention Communications last year. But we just finished our registration process. Communications is instrumental in helping us facilitate that. And so we have kind of our numbers locked in that I'm going to talk about. So you have an idea and also talk about a few program adjustments as we work through this information. But first, just a quick reminder to ground and frame summer programming. We do summer program for four, I think, very important reasons. You know, students have learning gaps that need sometimes additional time to have support enclosed. That is one of the, I think, the key underpinnings of summer program. There's also a few others, like supporting transition readiness. Rising sixth graders, those that are leading the elementary setting. Summer is the first time for a handful of those students that have stepped forward into middle school and formal programming. Likewise, more rising ninth graders, those that are leaving the middle school. We have a ninth grade launch program that's designed to help facilitate a positive transition. Summer program is also a great place to strengthen social emotional learning and build more connections, positive connections to the school. And also build some skills that help support and sustain them through the school year. Okay, so we have five core programs in the summer. We have an elementary, a middle school, we have a ninth grade transition program, a high school credit recovery program, and then a secondary newcomer program for ML learners. Quick, but we also have, just to note, these are kind of the formal under the, I'd say, the umbrella of the school district. There's two other programs that also run kind of side by side of our target services and credit recovery. That's HICASA, which is solidated with the help of community education. And ESY, which is designed to be extended school year for students with disabilities. Okay, and so when you look at what each program focuses in on, at our elementary and our middle level, we focus in on math, literacy, social emotional learning. The middle level, we add a sixth grade transition component, which includes things like getting familiar with the building, getting familiar with locker combinations, learning what Canvas looks like as a platform, iPad introduction, things like that are part of that sixth grade transition. For ninth grade transition, again, we touched on some of those key content components and language arts and math. But we also help transition to the high school with familiarization with building, with tech familiarization with new MacBooks, with networking on who their core supports are in the building, from administration to counselors to social workers, things like that. At the ML newcomer program, we focus on language development and social interaction. Again, trying to promote skill building, also build levels of compatibility in a large academic setting. And then at the high school level, we are truly focused on credit and learning recovery. Okay, and so I won't go through each of the program logistics. But I think, you know, if you remember our, basically our setup from last year, there's, there's very similar carryover into this year. And when you look at big picture for like enrollment numbers and waitlist, we're a very similar place as we were last year. Enrollment right now for the elementary program is bumped up a little bit to 356 students. And we have seven students right now that are on a waitlist that we're trying to clear off. It's very grade level specific. And we have some balancing that we're trying to redo to accommodate. Still working that right now. But numbers are up a little bit. And staffing model is very similar to previous years. You know, this is more of a tinker type of situation in summer programming where you might add a para, you might modify a specialist. But all in all, the number of teachers that we hire kind of is designed to meet the demand of what elementary students have for summer programming. One, I think, point of emphasis is that summer programming at the elementary level is targeted. We use a variety of criteria to identify students that would be a good fit, including fast bridge scores, MCA scores, recommendations from teachers, and idols. And so from that list, that's how we feel that matters. Okay, at the middle level, again, logistics kind of match very similar to last year. I would like to just, you know, comment that our model for our target services, which is our elementary and middle school, does line up with what the Wallace Foundation says is best practice for summer programming of both duration of the day and length of program. Okay, and so our enrollment at the middle level saw a little bit of a boost this year up to 145. I think one thing to just keep in mind is, you know, we have registration number set right now, the beginning of June. The program starts in the beginning of July. Sometimes what you will see is you'll see some natural attrition or no shows that happen from now until then. And so like last year, 103 is how many students ended up being served in the program till the last day. When we had this conversation last, beginning of last summer, that enrollment number was closer to 140 as well. Okay, and so that's just a natural part of the summer programming game. At our, our launch, in our ninth grade launch program, this is a four week program. We have a new team this year, including a new coordinator for that program. Eric Cameron, who is currently a dean at the high school, is stepping into that position as coordinator. We had our professional development day to kind of bring that team together. And it was a solid day of team building and getting that program ready to launch. Our enrollment numbers were very similar to last year. And again, point of emphasis here is that for the launch program, that is an open invite. All students in the middle level are invited to attend. And I think it's just, it's a hard audience to sell on doing four more weeks of summer school right after getting done with their final middle school year. But we have 37 students ready to rock in that program. Running side by side with that program is our ML newcomer program. So we actually do those in the same wing and in the same cluster so that we can provide those newcomers opportunities to kind of plug into some of that orientation and transition experience, even though it's a shelter group most of the time. Okay, our enrollment for that newcomer program is slowly kind of creeping, adding in the right direction. We have 21 students sign up and that is a 612 experience. And so there's a lot of differentiation that's done in that setting in that program. Okay, and then, you know, our credit recovery programming is also running during this exact same time at the high school, July 7th to July 34st. It's a four week program. It's a four hour block in the morning and that's a shift from two years ago when we actually ran an AM and a PM session. Our enrollment numbers just kind of got a little boost here at the end of the semester. And we're 257 strong. And, you know, we're hoping to increase the credit recovery attainment rate. Last year, just keep in mind, remember, last year was the first year we brought on our new platform, Ingenuity. That is sometimes a learning curve as you go through, kind of rolling that out. We've made some adjustments this year. Another thing, just to point out for the high school credit recovery program, math is always a challenge when you come to some like pre-designed curriculum. That's a fall for throw platform like Ingenuity doesn't always line up with scope and sequence. There are some nuances to math that you can't get in at the hand of curriculum. And so we have this year been transitioning out of Ingenuity for math into Canvas. And so we have those courses built out now. This will be the first summer that we roll math out, full scale in Canvas rather than Ingenuity. We're optimistic about some of the outcomes we might see in a positive way. Okay, shout outs to all of these stakeholders who have helped kind of bring this to the point we're ready to launch in July, Palmer Voss, Welcome Center. You can read through the list, MeanV Ed, LTE, TAC has been instrumental as well. And so that's all I have to share. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, please.
Well, I first kudos to you and the team and all of the partners that bring it together that, you know, within our mission, building students, building agency for success. Just seeing, you know, equipping these students today on the best possible outcomes. You touched on a little bit with the math. And of course, we're on the cusp of the literacy curriculum also evolving. So how to take some of this programming and like tie it into what is happening during the regular school year? Do you see any challenges, particularly in the literacy space?
You know, I think there's two things to comment. Number, number one, I just recently connected with Sarah about this.
Yes.
Right, because that not only in terms of philosophical approach to delivering the instruction, also there's a resource on my head that could be an opportunity. You know, sometimes you'll get digital resources that are licensed for a school or a school year. And there's good opportunities to plug into those resources in the summer. Sometimes there's barriers that come up because our summer program is a school in and of itself. Those licenses don't always cross over those lines. And so both of those things are on the way down.
Summer school now being called credit recovery at the school level, I love that. That's come a long way from where it was when I was a kid. But so how, you know, how does that work essentially? Is that helping kids get it back on track that maybe they'll fall behind in a broad range of types of classes, I assume?
Yeah, so, so we, we have the ability to offer all of the core coursework in a single session. You know, we are always trying to balance this flexibility with structure and support. And where we're landed right now with Ingenuity is we have a lot of flexibility. So the summer programming is self-paced. We have a lab model where content instructors can be facilitating multiple courses at the same time. Students have the ability to test out a content by chapter if they've retained something from the school year, which helps accelerate some of the credit attainment. So we have some high flying students who are motivated that might earn five or six credits in a session. Okay, we have some that come in and they say, look, I can give you a week and a half. I'm going to get my credit and I'm out of here. But that type of flexibility can, can help boost motivation to some degree. And so we, we learned in the last, I think, and we're always trying to dial it into our. to dial it into our students because for a number of years, we actually had an AM and a PM session, and there were some students that could go six solid hours in a day. And then all of a sudden, in a year, like that dropped off. And we're like, gosh, this is a mismatch of resources. Let's consolidate. And we got just as good as results with three-hour, two-hour speakers of instruction. So that's kind of how the model is set up right now, but always a work in progress. All right, thank you. Your question.
Next, our agenda is item eight point two, presentation on Academies of Shakopee. And here to present is Jeff Policki, our Shakopee High School principal, and Javier Hamaer, I'll miss him, Hamaer? Academies of Shakopee student ambassadors.
All right, well, good evening, Chair.
Please correct my name pronunciation because you're smiling.
Well, good evening, Chair Smith, members of the board.
We're gonna do the roller coaster.
Which, of course, I'm alluding to graduation, where we got to celebrate Michelle and the rest of the class of two thousand and twenty-five. And before I hop into that, just a just a thank you for for being a part of it. Just a fantastic evening and just a lot of lots of feedback that I've heard already. So congratulations to the class of two thousand and twenty-five. And we're gonna talk about two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five as with regard to the Academies of Shakopee and some work that we're doing and springboarding into the the next school year. I was I was joking, a lot of the things that we talk about, it's not uncommon for us to have schools come in and want to learn about the academies. I'm gonna mention a few of them at the end of the presentation. And oftentimes, we'll spend half a day, a full day, covering some of the things I'm talking about. So Javier and I, we're gonna give you the eight-minute version. So we're we're gonna give you some some high-level information, but certainly we'll have some time if you've got some questions. And Javier is definitely gonna add the the student voice and the student perspective with with the experience. So as you can see, just that we'll just we'll we'll cover some of the areas. You know, I know, Chair Smith, you're a part of the steering committee meeting. I'm gonna share some of some of those items. And then we'll go ahead and we'll get going. So this this organizational chart, this really just, it really, the the purpose of putting this up is this really illustrates, you know, when we talk about Shakopee High School. Shakopee High School, the Academies of Shakopee, it's one of the same. The Academies of Shakopee is is Shakopee High School. And this just gives a bird's-eye view of of the structure. You know, the day-to-day operations, it it's happening within the high school among our our assistant principals, our academy coach. Certainly, we have the the district office, you know, Dr. Redman, Mr. McCalsich, and and, you know, Tiffany on the communication side of it. But really, you know, we we have systems and structures in place that the things that I'm going to be talking about are built into regular, into weekly meetings, into different activities that we do. But really, the structure really provides the the framework of our of our day-to-day operations. As far as connecting, I wanted to show one slide here, just a snapshot of just just a few data points. You know, as as many of you know, two thousand and eighteen, that was the first year we brought the ninth graders into the high school, became a nine-twelve building. And so that was year one. And and you fast forward to two thousand and twenty-two, of course, that was the first cohort to go through in all four years. But then, obviously, because of disruptions due to the COVID pandemic, you know, learning models, it really was class of two thousand and twenty-four that it was all all about. Our first cohort with all the academy experiences and the graduation pathways, those local brag requirements that we have was last year, two thousand and twenty-four. This year was even a a a very, very similar, but a small milestone. And same thing, but it was including the the ninth-grade seminar course. If you recall, last year, we had the the ninth-grade seminar when those kids were ninth graders, we were in in distance learning. So it really is crazy over the course of that number of years. Now, at two thousand and twenty-five, we have like everything is is in. But as as the day, you know, on Saturday night, we had about seven hundred graduating seniors, two thousand eight hundred fully students at the beginning of the school year. And then you can see on the right-hand side, the academy enrollment broken down by by gender. There is a, in in this presentation, there is a folder QR code that you have at the beginning of this presentation. If you're interested, that has a more detailed recording snapshot that we start that we shared at our Academies of Shakopee steering meeting. So you're definitely welcome to take a look at that and spend more time on it. You know, another piece of that in there, you know, speaking of graduation rate trends, what I will say about graduation rate trends, I definitely noticed in almost the the nine full years that I've been here going into year ten, is you're definitely, you know, trends are just trends, right? You're gonna see there, you're gonna see ebbs and flows. But I I, well, I don't feel like, you can look at the data, you know, pre-academy, post-academy, we have consistently held, you know, prior to the academy, I think we're at, you know, pretty consistent in the high eighties in the four-year graduation rate. Since then, I feel we're more consistent in the in the nineties. And and I feel like that's a trend that has continued. And we've definitely, in 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 many of our subgroups, that trend, we've made a lot of gains in our four-year graduation rate. So I think there's definitely a, you know, a correlation that you can tell from the programming of when we began the academy model, you know, before, before and after. Student connections. That must be you, right?
Yes, so the Academies of Shakopee offers, I believe it offers many opportunities for each student to be part of that mentorship experience, which is very necessary in every school, not just ours. Some of the examples here include Academy ambassadors for CHIAM one, Career Expo, our unique industry tours, the respect we have for our ninth graders each year, the link crew that helps the ninth graders get adjusted to the building, internships with CAPS, mentors, competitors, and our unique academy champions that definitely get to collaborate with us a lot, especially with our, what's it called, industry council meetings. So one particular connection that I have personally is being part of SCCLA, which stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. This incoming year would be our third year as us being registered as a chapter. SCCLA opens a door to many star events, or in simpler words, topics that has to do with family consumer sciences and specifically in a variety of the courses offered in the human services pathways. So lots of these competitive events that these students can take place in really fit in with our human services pathways. And it doesn't just open up the opportunities to compete in star events, but it also opens the opportunity for professional development, lots of professional gatherings where students get to learn and experience those unique skills necessary for competing and for life. And this year, I'm proud to be the first recipient of the Lori Henry World Fellowship, which was awarded to me earlier this March school year. So that means my travel and lodging expenses are covered, which is very exciting.
Javier, he's Javier's gonna be a twelfth grader next year. I think it was actually last year where people were wondering if he was a senior as as a sophomore. But but I, you know, I I do believe this. I I believe the there are the opportunities that are available for for students. And and through the through the academy model, definitely have been able to see that firsthand. But then there's also the people really, like, really leaning into that and grasping it, and and that's and that's who Javier is. And and so he really encompass encompasses and involves what what the what the academy model is all about. So if you're through the CHIAM, do I keep going through here? All right. Want to mention some really cool opportunities that are coming up. This is through through a grant that we received. Elizabeth, we are our academy coach, applied for this grant and received it. We and and we've done different types of opportunities for our teachers before, but we have what we call a teacher externship opportunity coming up here later in June that is fully funded through the United Way. It's an opportunity over the course of four days just to get our teachers in and around Shakopee, learning about different, you know, the operations of of different business, different facets of what's going on. You can see some of the examples up there from Sand Creek over to Hoda Kachati and Canterbury Mystic, so on and so forth. So different different businesses, the different visits, learning our different operations, we're trying to cater it to the different, you know, the different academies. And so just offering our teachers that opportunity to see what what is going on beyond the four walls of their classroom. And we've done things like this, like in October, on the PD days in the past. But it's just great that we're able to offer this this summer opportunity for teachers. Then, of course, we have our annual engage event coming up later on this summer in August. And that is just a an opportunity to do it in the thrust stage of the high school and just an opportunity to make connections with our our business partners, our community, students at the school. So that will be coming up later on in August. The last thing I want to talk about a little bit is our recent Academies of Shakopee steering committee. We hold these meetings twice a year. We do one in November and we do one in May. And we have representation from from the building, the district, our academy champions, various business partners. Oftentimes, if we can get, you know, look our state representative or state senator, they've attended before school board. And and really, as we know, the the steering committee is just the, you know, kind of the oversight, you know, committee of the Academies of Shakopee. And and really, we, in in recent years, we have really relied heavily on the steering committee, meaning not only the whole is accountable for the work that we're doing, but to also to be just a partner to engage with, to help move the work that we want to do moving forward. So just some of the highlights there, you know, we we look at, this past meeting, we've looked at alumni feedback, and we discussed different ways of, you know, when when students graduate from Shakopee, how can we capture, you know, is what we're doing at the at the high school reflective of what meeting their needs once they leave, leave the school? We talk about different, just different sustainability elements just to, you know, deepen and advance our academy work going forward, updating our progress on the portrait of a graduate, right? So those elements, what we're, you know, everything for, you know, being resilient, respectful, collaborative, critical thinking, really looking at those elements and are we really embedding that into the work that we're doing and relying on our steering committee? What are ways that our steering committee can help us support that portrait or graduate work? And then also, we do, we're working on setting SMART goals for our steering committee. So what are areas that are that our steering committee can help? So for example, that four-year graduation rate trend. Our our steering committee has a SMART goal around increasing that rate, right? Because if we have more kids that are engaged in authentic learning experiences, right? They're gonna have, they're gonna be in school more. There's a trickle-down effect to all of those things. So that's just the some of the areas that we talked about and what we focused on. Some of our action items, implementing SchoolLinks to support development aligned with the portrait or graduate. I won't get too deep into it, but really, SchoolLinks is it's a it's a platform that really is gonna help us advance our college and career readiness in developing that portfolio, really helping students really see, you know, really making that strong connection between here, our activities that I'm doing in the classroom, and how it aligns with portrait or graduate. But then, more importantly, SchoolLinks has a great platform in it that will follow students after they leave Shakopee. So I think it's really gonna help us really pull some of that data on what our our students are doing after high school. There'll be more to come on this. We we just started learning about it in in April. We're, that's part of our summer work, is to do more training about it. But really excited about SchoolLinks. At a previous board meeting, I I was here with with Ms. Wielock, our ninth grade principal, talking about ninth grade orientation date. So that is some of the action, that is one of the other action items. Again, those determining and refining those learning experiences that reflect the principles of the POG, I talked about that. And then continuing just to develop a systemic and sustainable business engagement process, just deepening the deepening those those relationships with our business partners. So yeah, so the the last item on here, I I've hit on many of these. But, you know, the areas, you know, on the left are the stars, the the areas that we've, you know, through our mid-year visit, we had Donna Gilli as our Ford NGL coach. She did a visit with us, Cheryl Carrier, the executive president of Ford NGL was out here. And we just together, we worked on areas that we wanna, you know, that we're doing, you know, really to celebrate and in areas we want to continue to to work on. And really, what what I would sum it up, you know, without going through each of those items line by line, what all we want to do is, you know, when you think of, right, the compelling vision, building agency, and and really providing students with those authentic experiences that really cater to each and every student, I mean, big big picture, that that's what we're wanting to do. And 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 as the deeper we get into the academies, we just need to be aware of the changing world that students are in and that we're just, we're meeting their needs. And and that's really what it what's about, what's identifying specific actions year by year that we want to continue to improve and and get better at. Let's skip by that guy right there. But part of that, you know, part of promoting some of the highlights is we have hosted many schools coming in, Hopkins, Hastings, Wyandotte was just here a couple of years ago. You may have heard Hopkins is gonna join Ford NGL. And and so they've been in a lot of learning through us. Testimonials at the Capitol, just, you know, that pictures me at the Capitol about instructional hours. We had our CAP students working on a project for Heart Save Schools, all the different real learning learning and spotlights that we've had on various news outlets. We we've all celebrated those. And then on the right-hand side are just the the work that the partnership with the foundation in providing student certifications in areas of engineering, manufacturing, health science, gateway courses, just just the way that our foundation has supported just some highlights that are that are noted there as well, too. So again, a lot of a lot of work that has happened, a lot of work that can that we, you know, we need to continue to do. Again, I gave you the very abbreviated, high-level version. But at this time, Javier would be happy to field any questions. I will too.
Yes, I'll just start. I, you know, participated in the last steering committee event. And yeah, it's just, it's really energizing and inspiring to be part of that, just with all the partners in in attendance there. You can just see how engaged they all are in wanting this program to be successful. And so it's not just putting a label on a on a wall in the school. I mean, they're, they are really, really engaged and and want want to set set the school and the students up for success. And it was just really neat to be part of that. And I'm I know, I'm excited about this, QuickLinks or SchoolLinks, because that was, I know that was something we talked about in a couple of academies, like, how do we know we're successful? And you and you you want to reach, and we've talked about this here, too, just among the board, subtly, it's like, how do we get feedback from alumni? And and I think this is gonna be a great tool to do that.
I agree. It's just, it's just, it's a it's a data piece that we 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 want to do a better job of capturing, and we really think this is gonna help us.
So I guess I didn't have a question. Want to reinforce the the great work that you and Javier do.
I have, I have a really quick question. Have you reached out to students, just like graduating students before actual graduation, saying, how have the academies shaped you? Have they been helpful for your for your break plan in the future? I just kind of want to know what kind of input that you receive from the students.
Yeah, we've done, you know, we did a thought exchange just with, and we did, we, I mean, we look back to two thousand and eighteen, but we did write the class of twenty-four. So we have done a thought exchange with that, with just recent grants. Now, I think we can, you know, we we do the SEL survey that we do over here. But I think what we what we've talked about doing is taking that thought exchange. And we just did that for the first time this year. But we could take that with, say, the incoming, let me say, Javier is gonna be a senior. I think a lot of those questions we did on the thought exchange, just, you know, feel it like going into it? Do you feel like you've done that? But we have done that with the recent, you know, I know, I know, you know, my daughter graduated in two thousand and twenty-four. That summer, we had a thought exchange that went out to her and the other classes. Just just at least to address that part of, are we hitting the mark of what we want to do? So I feel like we've just started doing more of that.
Do you always survey just the students in general, like what their thoughts are about the the academies? If they like it?
And I would say we do it in in pockets. I think I think there's an opportunity with with the thought exchange to that point to broaden that out. Because we'll we'll do things in seminar, in class. We'll get to that from, you know, ninth graders. But I think to do it, you know, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, I think there's an opportunity to expand that thought exchange, different touchpoints through the year. to expand that thought exchange, different touchpoints through the year.
Thanks, brother.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're not taking a lot of pictures. Connects on our agenda is item 8.3, 2025 Community Conversation Results. And here to present is Tiffany Olson, our Director of Communications and Strategic Development. Welcome, Tiffany.
Thank you, Chair Smith, members of the board. I'm gonna go through a few logistics here of my goal for this very short time. It's very similar to what Mr. Colick, he mentioned. We can talk for half a day. Hope you will have the opportunity to further talk and dive deep. This is the abbreviated presentation from the full presentation. I might also have board briefs. So again, we want to give you as much information as possible, but today's, consider it a first look. Unbiased, first look, high level, super high level of the community conversation in front of you. You have the full presentation and the board brief that was put in the rap on Friday. Uh, and then you will have during the August Board Development Session, we'll call it the second, we'll dive a little bit deeper, similar to what we did last year where we can ask more questions. Again, go a little bit deeper. This is additional context for you to be successful as you're reviewing it between now and then. And also too, um, a couple of dates to keep in mind, the Jirul Campus, cause again abbreviated, we took out a lot of, um, general slides of, you know, April 14th, seems like a long time ago now. That's when we first discussed this community conversation. The period was May 1st through May 23rd, as a reminder, when, uh, folks could participate in this. And then Friday was when we shared that, the formal results with you. So structure recap, this is very high level, the one end, one open-ended question, 20 closed-ended survey questions to help get that longitudinal data. The big piece that I just wanna remind folks here that this is statistically non-significant, which I always love statistical terminology, cause it just sounds so abrupt to say this is non-significant, but that is the correct terminology and that's given the platform. This doesn't mean that there's no effect necessarily related to what's being presented in here, but it's not strong enough for those statisticians to be able to say there's like that correlation with the data, all sorts of p-value things that I think it does stop for a long time ago. That is not this. You've had Baker Tilly and you've had others that have done that. This is really just a recap, or pardon me, not a recap, a moment in time of a conversation of relevance to those that chose to participate. So I just wanna get your headspace good with that, which I know you know. Being abbreviated, looking at the participation, participation rate today, this was great. We exceeded our goal, but we were almost at 2,000 participants. Highly engaged, and I think if you're wondering what that radio ratings ratio means, that is basically those same, um, platform or coming back, which you can throughout the whole period, to see what others are saying and provide their voice, ranking and stars, almost like social media that you will, how they feel other voices and thoughts compared to their own. Um, when you have more people participating, your completion rate is, it's pretty normal to go down a little bit to what our goal was, which was 55%. It's not necessarily that much lower than last year, but if you think about it in periods, there's a lot to do when you answer 20 questions and provide open-ended feedback and then review others, there's a fatigue that's going to come with that. So that's to be expected. What I'm really excited about is the 5% that have participated in a language other than English, which you can see on here in the top right. I know it's a little bit small, but we're at 31, uh, participants that, uh, use the Spanish translation opportunity through this app. You can see some small percentages on others, but, uh, we exceeded what we had for our goal on that. And that does not mean that these are the only individuals that spoke a language other than English at home or for his language. They just chose to actually use the full translation feature where everything was in, uh, a native language. So I wanna be very clear on that, that doesn't necessarily represent full diversity or demographics. Um, and then one number to point out here, lots of things that may or may not be familiar to you from last time. When you look at the number of participants and the number of thoughts, that's those that provided open-ended. So you're roughly at that, you know, 45% or so that chose to give you that true dialogue. Others participated in closed-ended survey, things of that nature. Participation overall, we had some goals. We always wanna increase secondary, that's generally where we drop off a little bit. And want to increase no matter what overall participation. We had a slight increase in K through seven. We remain flat in eight through 12. Um, and that's the category of no child in the district was broken out for 2025. While that remained flat, I wanna point that out, cause when you see some of the other data, it does separate staff and students as one category and then those that simply do not have a child in the district, just so there's a little bit more clarity, if that makes sense. Um, we're gonna dive first and again, I'm gonna be as brief as possible, even have a timer going over here. So open-ended board here, just reminding yourself, we try to tweak the questions slightly each year while still holding true to our co-collective vision. Um, you can see the theme of the open-ended question was really about how, how we're supporting students for their future, not ours, um, and what we can do to make that as best as possible. What you see on the slide here is a summary of what those open-ended feedback items were and those that received the, the most ratings. It doesn't mean the best ratings, it means the most. So this is truly unbiased on that front. And if I can summarize, we tried to hold some of them, there's a lot of content on here. It really focused on student support. I can say that that was the most, not necessarily with that terminology directly, but all different components, whether it's supporting teachers, supporting students, classroom, all of those areas within that. There was definitely a theme a little bit stronger than previous of real-world education, if you wanna put that label on that. A lot of times life skills as well was also coined in here. And on the next slide, this is a reiteration of that of those common themes. So you can see student support, discipline is a word that was derived from this, not anything that I put in there, support for teachers. And you can see previous years, the only thing that really has been, I don't wanna say removed from the conversations, just not in the top five, was the activities and facilities components as far as our physical space and offering to the district, that wasn't as prevalent this school year. Uh, some opportunities, common themes in here, this is where we use the power of AI and the actual statements that were provided to actually give you some forward-looking opportunities that very much aligns with thoughts at a national level, uh, which is the PDK poll. You don't see that in here, but it's in your formal packet. And again, it's the individualized attention, student support, and this is taping some of the feedback and turning it into potential actions and opportunities in the voice of our community. Performance, this is where we switch to closed-ended. And as you can recall, we've done this for quite some time, this longitudinal data. We were able to balance our longitudinal data against national surveys in the past, that has since ceased, and we are able to do that, but we are able to balance against our own longitudinal data. You'll see most of this, if not all, um, but you can't say all when you're presenting statistics, cause that's, there's no, so we say at most, um, has remained flat. But what I can say with our overall grade that is in front of you here, district leadership and management has moved up in the ranking for the reason are basically how folks are deciding to give us the grade and what they're choosing. If that's not a negative or positive statement, that's just saying how they're choosing to grade us is based upon that. And then the next few, again, I'm gonna be very quick on these. We break down, if you recall, quality of education and quality of teachers, just to be very clear on how those two come together to support our students. Um, there's a paragraph at the bottom that'll be summarizing for most of them. You'll see we're green, you have that all the way across, but same or relatively flat, relatively the same. Favorability, so that's basically same or better, went down slightly from last year. Um, however, the unsure, um, was added in 2024 and that has increased. So again, if you're looking at where some of that movement is, little bit less in favorability, but a little bit more in unsure, unsure, and overall have remained flat. That is the same that you'll see with quality of teachers. And that percentage, if you recall, is about 4% higher in favorability and quality of education. So you can see some additional, we'll call it, uh, positivity related to the quality of teachers. Learning being a priority, this is a question, uh, obviously it is tailored more to those that have a, a child in the district and that's why you'll see that 9% of those that do not. So you have to take that in consideration with favorability. You can see again, relatively flat. And then there's some small notes of what's been down and up, but again, not significant enough to show a shift where we would say anything other than relatively flat for this. Safety and security, what I wanna point out here is in 2024, we usually have two or three, we'll call them rotating questions that are relative to what was going on in our school district last year was the capital projects levy renewal. This was one of three that were specific to that, but we've also been measuring it over time. So we kept this, removed the capital projects levy-related questions, again, kept this one on here. Favorability did decrease from, by 11% from the previous period, but again, we also saw an increase in neutral responses. So nothing more than 10%. I didn't rate flat on here, just so we were transparent on what had gone up and gone down, but you could in theory use that to describe the results here. Closed-ended survey summary, this is a narrative, in case you didn't have the other, or in case I did not present the other slides to follow, whatever, being in front of the school board and the superintendent and our treasurer, we do have our finance superintendent, school board scores on here, just so you can see them in front of you. Again, you'll see that same theme of these, there it's mostly flat with similar scores. Or there was an increase of being unaware, unsure, maybe lack of engagement, however you want to coin that, but not a strong decrease or decrease at all. So this is basically supporting that statement, you have schoolwork performance on here. Um, we made a note of election years and relatively flat with no significant shifts. For Dr. Redmond here, you can see no significant shifts as well. And then there was an increase in being unaware. And there's no positivity or negative, negativity associated with unaware is simply not providing a response based upon their knowledge of being able to do that, which I would prefer rather than someone picking on your grade. Financial management, again, you can see not a strong shift in, um, results. This one was a positive, um, where we could actually say there was an increase and a positive correlation, uh, with school administration, making decisions that are in best interest of students and families. Obviously, administration is terminology that can be taken in many ways, but there was a favorability increase of about 5% and also an increase in engagement overall on this question and the engagement period. And then this is the part I wanted to make sure we got to, this is really the, the rest of the meat that I wanna present to you here and then a couple of closing slides and I can answer any questions, but this, the two I'm presenting here are the annual rotating topic, as I mentioned, so this replaces capital project levy renewal questions from previous. To summarize what you have in front of you here, um, there's two favorability pieces on the top right and then you can see the full results at the bottom. Um, this question was at a very high level, looking at scenario, if there was a generation of roughly $5 million, that figure's been updated, um, since May 23rd, additional revenue. It's not if there's a one question or a two question or anything like that, it's just saying what you see in front of you. You'll see in the top right, roughly 56% either strongly favored or favored, um, this potential opportunity. You'll see there was a strong 21% that said they are unsure and need more information. And I'll share in a minute what some of that great feedback was. And then you can see the opposed, which is roughly 23% between opposed and strongly opposed. And to give you more insights with those that chose to respond, there was an open-ended opportunity to provide what that information would be and there are five pieces that were provided. Budget and spending details are listed there and was really focused on what, when, why, how, if you're looking at that component. The impact and the being specific on students and teachers and overall qualities and then those tangible elements. The efficiency and accountability and that's the responsibility component. Creating engagements, this is not me paraphrasing, again, this is what was in there, is the opportunity to provide feedback, um, and just have discussions before any final decisions are made. And again, think of the timeframe with this, this was prior to last, special school board meeting. And then there was a desire to understand, you know, the climate around them. So whether it's case studies or neighboring districts and just helping them understand where Shakopee is in comparison. The last pieces I'll leave you with, respect and pride, when you have an increase, uh, in participation, like if you are gonna have some fluctuations, these two did go down slightly, less than 10%, but made it. These are probably the only ones that were up in that five to 8% range. Uh, you can see that on here and favorability is strongly agree and somewhat agree. Those that are neutral or not included in here to be fair. And then the last one that I'm gonna show on the screen here and the rest are in their packet is just the communication awareness, because obviously you, this is an important piece when you're taking, uh, I don't wanna call it a formal survey, but you're providing feedback, engagement is assumed, obviously, and that doesn't mean that's always the case. This gives you a little bit of feedback on how self-ratings were with awareness and engagement as to what's going on in the district. So you can see we're relatively flat pre-K through seventh grade. We did have a decrease in ninth grade, uh, and we had an increase, I was actually a little surprised by this, since the decrease in traditional communication platforms has gone down and those who do not have a child in the school. So we did have an increase in all the engagements of, of that group. And other items that are in your packet, mobile, communication, electronic has gone up significantly, less rolling on paper, and then dive a little bit deeper in what's in front of you and some of the other longitudinal data pieces. Minute and a half over, I don't know if Jim or Mike are timing me as well, but let me know what I can answer here, knowing that we can talk for hours, but I want you to be still comfortable with what's in front of you, um, before we talk more in August about moving forward with the data.
And Dr. Redmond, obviously, yeah, in context.
Tiffany, um, is there a way to, and I know you can't probably answer this right now, but is there a way to dig deeper into the student support and discipline trend that we're seeing in the survey and to figure out, is that early elementary, is that middle school, is it high school, is it across the board? Because I would wonder if it was hypothetical, if it was elementary, doesn't have anything to do with some of the changes in the disciplinary policies that the state brought down to school districts and how students can be disciplined. But without knowing that information, I don't know if you can pull that, but that would be something that you could look into, I would need to know tonight, but I'd be curious about that. And then the other thing I'm really concerned about is the safety and security question and, um, I think we need to have some more discussion on potentially what that might But that was, that was really concerning to me.
Can I expand?
Yeah, go ahead.
I had the same question. Uh, and in part, part of that, you know, I don't know if you're able to even distill, like what drove some of that rating? Is it perception? Is it social media or events outside the district? We had the unfortunate event, um, uh, last Tuesday, but I think the response was exactly what we want to see from a safety, security perspective and all protocols put into place. Um, and we, I would say, and certainly give you and Jim credit for this, but the whole safety team, protocol partnering with Shakopee PD and I don't know what work can be done in presenting to the community, the, the pieces that are in place to ensure-
Sure, safety and security.
Sure, safety and security. So I'm echoing your concern, Christie, like, I don't know what more we can do. We're seeing maybe different behaviors, and maybe there's a perception that the school's unsafe because of what's happening outside of the building?
And I mean, it has a sixty percent favorability score, which is good.
It's good.
But when I look at the somewhat disagree and strongly disagree, and I don't hear that till last year, to me, that's a big jive.
I think an important piece that we can pull is actually addresses both your questions for August is the XY access opportunity that is very similar, I was putting it up on the screen, to awareness, obviously, that's a similar topic, but where we can break down and run that XY to see, you know, is that coming from those that don't even have a child in the district? And that's, again, perception because of media and things that are going on. Is that, you know, where folks are at? So I think that's something that we'd absolutely pull. We didn't ask the next level of detail on safety as to why, like we did perhaps the financial piece. So I'm not sure we pulled that, but I can definitely do this both for this one and the previous one that you mentioned, where we could understand grades. And again, we can really run XY on anything. While we have raw data, I think that XY gives us the most sound response to be able to then zero. And you saw that increase, but then, again, for those that don't even have a kid in the school district, altering that, which is still of very importance, but different discussion with those.
Exactly.
And if they do have a kid in the district, are there, are there some open-ended comments attached to those? If we find who the strongly disagree are and look at their open-ended response, would that maybe provide some insight?
We absolutely have the ability to do that.
I think that would be helpful. I share the same concern, Christie.
Your questions? Thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate that.
Next on our agenda is an action item, item nine point one, memorandum of understanding for Shock PD University. And Dr. Redman will present.
Yeah, I'm pleased to present on behalf of our SEI, our Teachers Union Group, and our other leadership team and folks who've been working on what I would say making a course correction is something that is working very well in our school district. I did put some information in last Friday's rap for board members. And our leadership team that we kind of noticed that, we've had Shock PD University, or Shock BU, as we like to refer to it, it's been in operation now for quite a while, I think, came in in 2019, if I remember what I wrote. And some of you, we probably haven't even had that conversation about what it is, but it's an opportunity for teachers to focus on really Shock PD-centric learning goals and objectives and to support them in that journey. And it's actually, it's a program that I would say, from my perspective, has been very positive and continues to serve, you know, serve our district well. We did run into, and we learned more about this, you know, we set it up at the beginning and, you know, put kind of a credit system together and kind of incentivized participation. And I do think it's a win-win because, you know, the curriculum, you know, we have a voice in that and our folks and how they teach it, and it directly applies to our learning priorities and things that we're working on in our school district correctly. We missed one piece that we really, at the time, didn't think would even be, you know, much of a deal. But we had people who have been wrapping up their Shock PD University and earning, you know, the ten credits and a lane change, and some, literally within weeks, also earning a master's, and then the Shock PD University credits disappear. And so we went back, reflected on that, and went, no, our goal is to be fair in terms of that incentive. And so really, to sum up what the changes in that MOU is, if you earn the ten credits in Shock PD University, they will no longer disappear if you earn a master's degree after. You would, upon earning a master's degree, would have a master's degree plus ten credits. And, you know, it still won't get you from, I think it's BA thirty off the top of my head, to a master's degree. You can't do that, you know, you can't do that lane because it doesn't exist. Or an MA forty to the doctoral lane, it won't jump you there. But the credits will no longer disappear upon earning your master's. They'll be added on top of your master's. And I certainly support it. I think it's really good collaborative work, really applaud Keith Gray and his team. Our learning and teaching and equity department and a lot of others have weighed in and absolutely think this is the right thing to do, to continue to support Shock PD in a meaningful, positive way. So happy to try to attempt to answer questions. Otherwise, I would just recommend approval.
I love this one. It was brought up in 2019. And it's, I still think it's an absolutely magnificent program for our teachers.
Who's leading it? Well. Is it?
Shock PD.
Yeah.
Sarah Wernberg and her team along with the summer.
Okay, they won't learn.
Yes, they, yeah, it depends on the, there's the elementary, there's the secondary component, but yes, they continue to.
Because I don't answer with the initial.
Yes, they've taken over. And I should have mentioned, I think it was mentioned in the rap, that credits you're earning them through our program really can only be used on our salary schedule. And, you know, you're not going to take and transfer that to a neighboring district.
Yeah, they really like them.
Well, there is an element of retention, and it makes sense where, hey, you're bought into our priorities. We appreciate that and applaud that effort to learn and grow and be better able to serve our students in those learning areas. It really is one of those kind of a win all the way around.
Seems like a whole bridge. There's an older question. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Aldrich and a second by Peterson. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is another action item, item nine point two, online agreement with Eden Prairie. And presenting will be Jim McCausage, our Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Smith. This is something I've been working on since before winter break with a small group of people from both Shock PD Public Schools and Eden Prairie Public Schools, primarily Stuart Lang, the high school who oversees our online programming along with Jeff Policki, and then some similar people from Eden Prairie Schools, meaning the online school principal and our Assistant Superintendent. We have a contract tonight that was drawn up by Mick Walzberger and agreed upon by the attorney for Eden Prairie Public Schools. And essentially, what it allows is for students who want to take online supplemental classes to take them formally through Eden Prairie. They remain our students, they remain in line for a Shock PD diploma, and allows us to recover some of the revenue that we receive from the state in the way of funding. So we're paying, essentially paying Eden Prairie tuition for the credits. And then, as I said, we do keep some of the money here at Shock PD, which right now, when students are choosing this option, we're losing all of the money. We're also putting our counselors in a situation right now where they're looking at a menu of online providers and trying to figure out which one fits a student best. This will essentially formalize an agreement where our students will be asked to move to Eden Prairie Online, which is a very ready full program.
Questions?
How many students do we have currently taking classes in Eden Prairie?
Right, as of Friday, in talking with Stuart, we have three hundred course requests. That's not three hundred students, but that's course requests. One student could be, you know, asking for a full load of courses, up to sixteen. Other students are taking, you know, one class, two classes, that type of thing.
So this is potentially, as you said, bringing revenue back into the district to support our services?
The requests exist either way, yes. It's a matter of how we fulfill them.
Is that three hundred? Is that all just for Eden Prairie? Or is that, is that any online outside Shock PD?
Right now, we have three course requests for Eden Prairie next year. And what we've been doing is, we've been looking forward to this agreement, so we've been cataloging them in the spreadsheet so that when this contract is approved, we'd be able to just push them over to Eden Prairie.
And Eden Prairie has been the most popular choice of students who reside in our district for online services.
Would you say the demand's not requisite of developing our own program at this point in time? I mean, there's obviously a great start for us with that, I imagine, and run those numbers of loss very. Exactly. We ran an online program through COVID. After COVID, we attempted to maintain it. We've seen diminishing returns and the expenses all the way to revenue. That's why we're looking for the partnership.
And I would add one piece. Eden Prairie, they were, they were working on the launch of a, an online program prior to COVID, and were really ready to launch at that time. And so they had a head start on a lot of other districts. And I think we've seen kind of the saturation of the market in our area. And it's one of those where there's not, you know, in terms of viability. I think during the pandemic, everybody had to run their own version of an online program, but we've now seen the, you know, we tried to continue, and we've had supplemental, and we really went, you know, almost K through twelve originally and tried to sustain that. But the market, you know, chose other things. And we're trying to find the best way to support our students kind of in that next phase of this online market and believe very strongly that, you know, the EPL option is the best. So, great question.
And in cases where we have enough students to make a full class, we still do that. So we have some eleven and twelve grade core classes that we will run online next year because we have enough registrations to do it. If that were to arise at ninth or tenth grade, we'd do it as well, but we just don't have enough students to support it. EPL, on the other hand, has over seven hundred students that are full-time online now.
And I'm assuming that there's, there's some classes they offer as well when we do not?
Yeah, they, we, that was a big part of the attraction of them. They offer electives that will actually allow us, a student from Shock PD wanted to go through an Academy's type experience with a three-quarter sequence, they actually have the ability to align that for us and actually with us. And that'll be part of what Stuart's working on next.
Is there a term to this agreement or certain duration?
It's a, it's a one-year agreement at this point. We would like to, you know, bring it back a year from now and lengthen it. One of the nice pieces of protection in here is there's a re-opener, that if something were to happen and this were to disadvantage ourselves or Eden Prairie, we could come back to the table and figure out what we need to renegotiate in order to make it a fair agreement for both sides. The negotiations themselves were very friendly and amicable, and just really good conversation.
I like the last bullet point under highlights, that they will earn a Shock PD diploma, and that it provides clarity on eligibility for sports, that they could be a Shock PD basketball, football, whatever speech participant and not Eden Prairie. This is a huge issue that the state high school is trying to sort out right now. Online schools have really put a wrinkle in eligibility. And I mean, we're talking thousands of kids that have to go through eligibility issues every single year because of online schools. There is a task force right now that's looking at that and looking at what adjustments need to be made to ensure that, I mean, there are schools that just have kids show up and it's like, well, I'm here for basketball, and they have no record of that student. But they have the right to be playing in that school. So there's a lot of things that need to be clarified and sorted out from an eligibility standpoint with sports and activities that are high school responsibilities. So this provides very clear direction as to how that would work. And I applaud that piece of it.
I think it gives the student the best choice of, you know, just the learning content. That definitely seems like a good partnership and a symbiotic relationship.
I made a motion to approve the online agreement with Eden Prairie for the course of one year.
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Brophy. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Next on our agenda is an information item, item ten point one, our district financial outlook, and Dr. Redman will present.
Yeah. And the first, or I should say, slides three to twenty-six, should be very familiar. They're from the June fourth special school board meeting. And no, I'm not going to go through all of them that they're there to refer back to. And really, that's, we've built the base over the last, you know, few months in terms of trying to present information, share that, try and when questions have been asked, bring it back, go into more detail. And so if we go all the way down, I think it's to slide twenty-seven, and I'm trying to, I own computer during the memorandum of understanding, so it went a little haywire and everything started spinning. So I'm restarting. So thank you, Tiffany. This section is really possible decisions, and it's an opportunity as we go into the next slide, the board, you know, the expectation would be that June 23rd, there's some decisions about charting our financial course moving forward. And if we walk through this slide, the things that we've talked about, again, I'm going to, I'm going to refer to the tops as possible decisions. This is not exhaustive. We could take things away. We could add things to this list, but trying to kind of capture where we're at, what we've looked at, and begin to move more into a, hey, I think this is where we should go, or let's consider that as a board action type of frame, knowing that we need to do that really two weeks from this evening. You'll see, we listed the three million in expenditure reductions. That would be a recommendation from district leadership and myself that, you know, we make some of these adjustments anytime we have decreases in enrollment. Some are automatic. We do some things in terms of, you know, we've got declining enrollment, it impacts transportation. Did put in parentheses, want to be very clear, this is not talking about changing walking distances. This is if you have fewer kids, you should have fewer bus routes, and that does save us some money. And then reductions in specific areas to match expenditures to state-provided revenues. And then reductions in district programming support. There's some areas that have lagged behind the actual enrollment decreases in terms of budget expenditures and revenues. And then the next, the next row would be there's an either-or choice. You'll notice there's gray lines above these three rows and below these three rows. This is in that either-or category. We, you know, could generate five million in new revenue. We've talked a lot about the possibility of the school board approving a ballot measure for November fourth of this year with an operating levy be voted on by the community. This would be a tax-neutral in the sense that it would shift from the current bond payments to new payments for operations that are being paid by our community taxpayers. This has a six hundred and twenty dollar per pupil, and new revenue would generate that according to our most recent data from our financial folks. Or, there's a they-or, you know, we've got a seven to nine million dollar deficit for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So if there's not five million in new revenue, it stands to reason that if we added the three million in budget expenditure reductions from the first row, we would need to add, you know, another at least five million, getting us to eight million in total budget cuts. That's roughly six and a half percent of annual general fund expenditures. That additional five million in budget cuts would be needed if the school board were to elect not to run an operating levy on November fourth, or if the operating levy is run but not approved by the voters.
So I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep, I was going to say, interject it anytime, so good time.
So instead of five million in budget cuts across the board, that should say eight million in budget cuts across the board. Am I understanding that right?
No, the, you know, it's the three million from above, which would be no matter what.
Oh, that's-
Those are those adjustments.
That's no matter what.
Yep. Plus, you know, if we don't have five million in new revenue, we would need five million in budget cuts.
In addition, okay.
Yep, great question.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
And then there's, you know, an opportunity, you know, that's been talked about a little bit at previous meetings, to add another approximately two point three million in new revenue. That would entail most likely a second question on an operating levy, on a, you know, that possible November fourth operating levy. That would move the district to the cap or the maximum allowable for us to add to an operating levy. You know, and it would add new taxes to support the two hundred eighty-eight dollars per pupil, or this two hundred eighty-eight dollar per pupil addition to the operating levy. That revenue, you know, would or could be used, well, would be to make sure the budget is balanced in the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. We've kind of targeted eight million right in the middle of that. We've kind of targeted $8 million right in the middle of that $7 to $9 million projected deficit. If that deficit were a little higher, we could use some of this revenue to make sure that '26, '27 budget is balanced. Or then if, you know, whatever wasn't used could be used to, you know, counter the 1 to 4 million deficit that's projected for the '27, '28 school year. And I do want to call your attention to the very bottom row. There's other with a question mark. You know, I think we've, I've tried to include any of the things that have been discussed. That doesn't mean there couldn't possibly be something else.
And Dr. Redmond, I can.
And so that.
Yeah.
1 to 4 million and or the other. We don't know what's going to happen in the legislature, right? And is that part of what's, you know, some of that? Just, we just don't know what we don't know.
Well, I think the further we get out, there, there's more unknowns in terms of enrollment, in terms of state funding. Is it, you know, and it does not appear, well, and in terms of inflation.
Yeah, exactly.
Are they going to align? And if we go to the next slide, we, we do jump into that. But separated the '27, '28 school year, acknowledging that, hey, you know, that, that is out there. Right now, we're really looking at a wide range, that 1 to 4 million deficit. You know, and obviously what we do in the '26, '27 school year impacts that. We did the continuation of the $2.3 million in additional operating levy revenue on the top line there. And I just kind of explained, you know, the thinking behind that. There, I would expect us, you know, to make, you know, again, kind of based on our enrollment projections, seems very reasonable to make another $500,000 in expenditure reductions that just align with a decrease in student enrollment. And then anything that would be needed above and beyond that. This, my suggestion would be we would need to look at the cross-board budget cuts out of our general fund or operating budget as needed to, to balance the budget. And then do have a point, you know, those of you who are looking at education funding in this year's legislative session, there, there's a lot of discussion even going into the '28, '29 biennium where those projections are, are, I would, I would use the word concerning. You know, and there were some pieces already of, of shutting off, you know, that inflation expectation that's been turned back on, but it doesn't mean it couldn't be shut off in the next biennium. But certainly there, there are large concerns about our, our state's budget moving out beyond, you know, getting into the second biennium out, if you will. And then that's kind of, you know, alluded to in the years beyond the '27, '28 school year. You know, depending on, on where we're at, but the expectation would be our, our primary tool and perhaps our only tool would be to make a cross-board budget cuts as, you know, as we're dealing with those challenges moving, moving out into fiscal '29, '30 and beyond. But that's a long ways out. I'm not, I'm not an astute officer, so how's that?
I am, so.
So you tell me what it's going to be like.
Well, the thing is, okay, let's just, let's just say we, we, we do, we do a levy and it passes. We do a second question and it passes. Great, that's, that's, that puts us up to the cap, which is, which will help for the '27 and '28. And then basically after that, the board will have to do budget cuts of $1 to $2 million probably, if not more, every year going forward. That's just a reality.
Because there's no, there's no money.
There's, there's declining, there's declining enrollment. There's just, this is reality. The revenue would be nice, obviously. Who doesn't like revenue except, you know, the people that have to pay it? But if we don't do cuts, and I, I, again, I'm very disappointed that the '25, '26 budget that we'll be passing in a couple of weeks doesn't have cuts in there more than what we have because the accumulator effect helps later on. And I, you know, I'm not, I don't want people to lose their jobs. Unfortunately, reality is just not great. We don't know what's going to happen at the feds. If we do get rid of the, the Federal Department of Education, hey, then we actually might get more money. But that, that's a possibility. Don't laugh at that.
I smiled, I didn't laugh.
I, I ran the numbers and it can work much better, but we don't need to get into that.
Well, we don't know about QCOM either. I mean, do we make that as a possibility? We could give it?
For the, this, in the current session?
I bet it's probably more likely that the other schools will lose QCOM than us receiving.
That, that was.
That was on the chopping block, but got put back in.
So that's, I, I think, you know, having a, a tax-neutral levy for at least question one and then letting the, and it passes. And as I said at the last meeting, you know, letting Shakopee decide, you know, the, the taxpayers decide what kind of district they want is important. But looking forward, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be tough for those future boards to make those decisions.
It's, it's possible though, I mean, projecting even that far out, we, we may have enrollment.
We may have enrollment hurrah, might all at once. You know, you just, and again, what we don't know, we don't know. But yeah, all at once with, with, with all the housing. Maybe everybody will start having kids. Michelle, maybe your generation will actually start having kids. Not, not necessarily you. If everybody, if everybody can give birth to five-year-olds, that's.
That's the idea.
But I don't think it'll seem that big of a swing that quickly.
No, no, it's going to be.
It's going to take some time. And, I mean, it, hopefully it'll slowly start to go up. But we need a big increase quickly in order for the revenue to offset the expenses that we're going to have. But then we get more kids, you need more staff.
Right.
So there is an expense and it's not pure revenue that we get if we run it more students. It's not, it's not, it's not dollar for dollar.
Right, exactly.
Patiently going in.
I'm done. I mean, oh, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with everything you said. In fact, if we look at the feedback on the community survey, like more programming and more teaching and don't increase classroom size, right? That's the, that's the feedback we're hearing. And it's anecdotal, right? But we can trace that data back to the responses we heard. In light of the budget challenges, and I like how you write it, Joe, it's the three to five-year view, right? Where you hit that financial cliff, assuming no other changes. And what's the alternative? Classroom sizes will likely have to increase if there isn't the budget for staffing, right? At some point, because what, between 80 and 90% of that revenue is spending the classroom or services organization. This is Dr. Redmond saying on many occasions. And so I think it's prudent. And just to be honest with the community, like, we really collectively don't have the choice but to ask for all of it. And if it's framed in two questions, budget control, I think it's applicable, right? Because you don't want to create taxation where it's not necessary. But by not asking for the extra, what, $288 in terms of tax increase? So the question, what question to come from that? Isn't going to position us any better for that '28, '29, you know? Further out years.
It helps.
It helps. But it doesn't, it doesn't solve the long-term problem unless significant changes happen at the state. And yeah, it would be great if Shakopee suddenly had open enrollment and birth rates and, you know, organic with its operating community. But that doesn't solve the problem for our neighboring metro districts or. Minnesota schools in general. So if you look at it like if we're going to advocate for public education, right? There, something needs to change in the revenue model at the state.
I just have a question, you know, from a revenue perspective. I mean, the businesses that we work with partnerships, right? I mean, we're getting a new theater that's kind of generates so much revenue. I don't know what I don't know, but do we get a percentage, right? So the schools would start to get a percentage along that revenue profile?
This would be a Bill Mazzie question. That affects on that tax capacity. So like the pie gets bigger, so everybody's, like, tax burden gets decreased.
Yeah.
But revenue is capped based on the enrollment rate. So just because there's more money in the community, doesn't mean schools.
And taxpayers.
If we get $10 million, we get $10 million whether or not there's 15 people paying it or 100 people paying it.
Yeah, that's where, that's the other way to say it.
You guys are good. Hang out over here.
I got my.
My computer's back on though.
So. For good or not, we've had, we've done this role before, so maybe.
So I have a question. Going back to the previous slide, when we talk about where some of the $3 million in expenditure reductions are going to be. And I understand the staffing adjustments based on the decline in enrollment because we do that on a annual basis anyway. I understand the transportation adjustments that can be made. But I want to understand more about the reductions in specific areas to magic expenditures to state provided revenue. So I know that there are some areas for the coming, well, the biennium that we are going to have a pretty significant reduction in money that would be student support type of funds. But I guess, I went back and I've got here all, where did we make permanent budget cuts previously with our last money? When it failed and then when it passed? And there was a big chunk of that we kept permanent. And I, I guess at that time when we made that decision to go for an operating levy, we knew where those cuts were going to be. And that's where I'm struggling now to understand what those cuts are going to be and if we're going to, will we get that information before we have to make a decision in two weeks? Or a month, whenever we are going to decide on which path forward we're going to take? Because, you know, you could look out to '27 and '28 and '28, '29, those bienniums, and it's very concerning. And a lot of money, it looks like, or you know what you're talking about, is going to come on a special education. So we're going to likely see a good reduction in special education with cross-subsidy, I'm assuming. We don't know what that is yet because they are going to have a task force that will look at that. But in looking at, you know, some of the stuff that we cut a few years ago, are we going to hit those same areas again? And are we going to leave areas we didn't touch unscathed again? I know that's a loaded question, but that's. It helps me to make, you know, where my thought process, I mean, I kind of know where we have to go, but it also helps me as a board member understand a little bit more of where these cuts are going to come from instead of making a decision that, yes, we're going to make cuts, but I don't know where. Does that make sense?
It does. And the answer, I'm going to try to answer it briefly, but it, that's a complex question. I think when we go back to 2020, when we did things, we were in a, we were in a very unique situation just in terms of where the district had been. There, it is very rare that a school district would go through and basically list with specificity the cuts at this point. We certainly, I don't know that we could do that in the next two weeks. Now, are we planning to? Because some of it gets into the latter part of that question. And I think it's, you know, Joe, you laid out and, and the rest of you kind of joined in. We're in a different spot just in terms of, you know, at that point, we, we knew we had to balance the budget. But we also knew that moving forward from '20 to '21, when we didn't have any operating levy at all, there was an opportunity for additional operating levy funding. And therefore we, you know, purposely, and I applaud the, the board, there were some things that we didn't think it was worth, you know, that, you know, we made our permanent budget cuts in an area that we, we, some we had that we just carried over forever. And the other cuts we did part of our consideration, not that they weren't painful, they absolutely were. But we didn't want to destroy programs in doing that because we thought there was still a fairly good possibility that we could restore many of those parts of the things being cut. Where I think this as a different component, which you've alluded to, where depending on where we are revenue-wise, you know, and whether there's a, you know, if you move to the cap, for example, all right? We're watching a lot of school districts that are already at the cap make sizable budget cuts because state funding has not kept pace with inflation. That $6.6 million annual hit that we have in Shakopee, that's prevalent everywhere just based on the gap between what we get from the state and inflation growing over the last four years. But it's a different, there's different calculus where depending on how we go, where, yes, you do now have to look at long-term programs and can you be the same-sized district in terms of the number of offerings and how you do that and all those other parts, class sizes, which ultimately the board is, you know, has the decision-making. But that takes, you know, that takes, I, I would say, really extensive thought, study. And it's a different, it's a different context than where we were previously. But we can certainly, and we're always willing to, you know, provide information, you know, kind of at the board's discretion. I think when we talk about across-the-board cuts, in my mind, they look pretty similar to, which is kind of what we did last time. But we left some things out purposefully, which I would look to the board for direction. But we left activities and we left athletics out because there, there seemed to be, yep, other things could continue to function. They were going to function with less staffing, you know, whatever, but they could carry on. But if you cut a sport, if you cut it for one year, you're really cutting it probably forever. And so we did not.
The risk of cutting a sport is those students that are in that sport will go to a district that offers that.
Right, who's the rest? Or an activity, you know, and it could be all kinds of things. And also, and this is where I really applaud, you know, the board efforts because we also had the discussions where there are other districts that sometimes do that as a normal operating business, or we're going to scare the community. To me, that, that is not ethical. It's not okay. And we really didn't do that. We weren't trying to create the most, you know, whatever awful picture. We were trying to, to handle and navigate a tough situation the best way possible, doing that with discussion. And so I think as we're moving towards sort of a, a maximum in revenue, ultimately that state role in determining our future becomes the only role. If, if, you know, one way or the other, either if the community supports the operating levy or two questions, you know what you have, that does not, you know, I, I don't think anybody's projecting the way the state's been funding us, even when we had a budget surplus and now that is, that is gone. I, I don't think we're looking at the next four years with a lot of positivity. I hope I'm wrong. But it also, you know, that has to inform our decision-making for what does our school district look like? You know, I think there's a great argument, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I've heard a number of people say, let's try to do everything we can to serve our students and community for as long as we can. But also let's not fool ourselves that this is a permanent, long-term solution.
And Dr. Redmond, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yep. So I don't know if I answered it, but.
What, what we haven't said, but it's worth mentioning, and I think we're enlightened on this, we will not go into statutory debt. We're going to balance the budget.
So the difference between 2025 and 2020 is our unrestricted fund balance is at 1% right now. It was at 1.2?
Yeah, it was.
In 2020, we didn't have a choice. We was, we're cutting 2.1 million right away, right, from the 2020.
But I think we're going with that.
Then it's 5.4. And when we, before we even had the vote in, in November of 2020, the board voted for the $5.4 million. We, we voted. We, we listed it out. We're like, if it doesn't pass, this is what we're going to do. It did pass and we did all of it.
So in other words, they won't, we won't go on the whole and we won't let the state, you know, take. So in other words, they won't, we won't go in the hole and we won't let the state, you know, take control, right?
Oh, absolutely, you can only cut so much.
Agreed.
Correct.
Well, that's the.
I mean, unless you want to get rid of all of your teachers and then what?
Exactly.
I mean, because that's, again, that's the biggest piece of the pie with, with expenses is salaries and benefits. And you can only cut so much for so long and it's.
And it is, and again, it's, this is macroeconomic. So how many districts would get to that breaking point to the extent where everybody's going in the red, right? I mean, that's the bit of reality unless something materially changes in the education model and that's a whole other conversation.
Education's going to be, you know, funding and everything. And fifteen years from now, it's going to be a very interesting thing. Yeah, we have that crystal ball and we can see what it could be, but we don't. But yeah, we could end up with a lot more students and all this could, could magically disappear. But I, you know, we can't plan on that.
Tiffany, would you put slide eight back up? And I apologize, but I mean, I think this visual is that powerful where if those, if the gap between the orange line and the blue line were the same now as it was in twenty twenty, we would be in a much better situation.
Yeah.
I mean, well, six point six million dollars a year better. And nobody predicted this. If, if, if those gaps continue to widen, you know, that's, that's one thing. If they somehow come back closer together, it's another thing. But still, it, it's the past four years and the widening between, you know, the rate, what we would have gotten had the state, you know, primary state funding kept pace with inflation and what we actually got. You know, that, that is, that is the root cause of this. You know, moving forward, you know, we can't predict necessarily what's going to happen. But it is, and you look back at that thing, you know, you go back, what's the first, two thousand and three? So over the last twenty-two years, you know, you can see how that, it was fairly stable, that gap for an extended period of time. But it is widened, you know, day near and every year over that twenty-two years. There were somewhere, you know, the gaps stayed the same, somewhere it closed maybe just a little bit, but not many.
I think the reality is is that we need to have both questions passed and make cuts in order to maintain the same programs that we offer today in Shakopee schools. And if we don't get that, we're cutting programs, I think it just don't see the way around it.
But I was going to echo that, like, I think it's pretty clear, we all seem to be on the same page that a two, a two-question levy is the path forward. I know we're not going on that right now, but it seems clear to me that that is what we have to do. And then we can get into the discussion of, and even understand the discussion of what do we cut? When do we cut it? What cuts are going to be permanent, long-term? And look, but those are, that's step two. We don't have to have solve all of that.
One of the clarifications I was looking for on, I think it was the second to last slide where you have the three million in cuts, part of the plan. And to Christie's point, she was like.
Tiffany, we go to slide twenty-eight, please.
Twenty-eight, it's outside to give five million thousand in the future for, for the, just the decrease in enrollment. The, the, I would say, is it safe to say that those are natural type of budget cuts or changes you would make? We've been in a period of declining enrollment for five years, right? So how is that compared to how we've been operating? Like if we need, X Y Z L mention needs four third grade teachers instead of five because of the situation that we're in. Is three million that much bigger of a number where we have to make greater staffing decisions than we have in the last five years with declining enrollment?
It is. And, and depending on that, the, the decreases in enrollment, we have some things that are automatically adjusted. You know, our class size targets stay the same.
And it changed with this, class size trend?
It's not in there. I mean, that certainly, I think when you start to look at budget cuts or, you know, it's the flip side. If class sizes go up, you have fewer teachers, they're inverse. And that, you know, is when you, when you're talking either part of that, they, they do impact each other. The three million is more than the typical decreases. And we, we haven't even, you know, we, we haven't even used the word budget cut. Because to us, those adjustments have been part of our work due to decreasing enrollment. We've been making expenditure decreases. We've been, you know, and parts of our organization adjust really well. Other parts, you know, we're mandated like special services, really challenging to make decreases because we're mandated, you know, by law to provide those services. We're also mandated under something called maintenance of effort. Where you, you know, if you have the same, basically, if you have the same number of students with the same number of disabilities or needs, you'd have to be providing the same level of service from one year to the next. Otherwise you're out of compliance with the special education laws. But the three million is an increase, it's acknowledging and going deeper, which we have tried to do at times in various parts of our organization going, all right, our enrollment is this now, it used to be this, we, we need to be smaller in places. This is a continuation of that. And again, you know, Bill, Bill Manassi and his financing have just done great work of working within various departments. We now feel that we've got those things in order. And I know we've shared things like even with our compensatory revenue budgets to be really clear about what the revenue is, how it's being spent, how we account for that. So we have at times done more probably than the five hundred thousand. But the three million encapsulates a need to, there are some adjustments that we've been looking at in terms of programming. How does it work? How effective is it compared to other things? What is the trade-off if you change a model, you do it differently, or you run it with less district support? And we're, we're just kind of in the beginning stages. But that's where that would come from, which is why I should put some of those descriptors, which I know aren't satisfying. But looking at that lens, when we get into using that phrase across the board, that's where we look at the pieces of our budget that can be reduced. And, and we've, I think, become really familiar with that thought that about eighty percent, if you don't count transportation, about eighty percent of our budget that our general fund pays people, salary and benefits. And within that, we just talked about, you know, special education would probably never have an equivalent reduction just because of the legal mandates and, and, you know, our need to continue to provide those services in compliance with the law. But when we look at the other areas in that, you know, teaching makes up roughly sixty percent. Now, special education is a, a good chunk of that. All the other employees, all the administration, all the support staff, all of those, you know, you can't avoid hitting the eighty percent of your budget. You certainly have to look at transportation, which is like another five percent. And you do look at the other fifteen percent, but a lot of that supplies and equipment. We're already tend to run lean. I mean, yes, you can turn the thermostats down another couple of degrees, but none of those are large-scale savings. And so you do need to, you know, kind of, and that's what we did last time is we basically had a percentage and said, all right, all of these areas need to be reduced by this percentage, which is why we put that at six and a half percent kind of in total there. And to start to figure that out and detail that. And, and again, it, it does as this moves forward. And I don't know that it's, you know, where we're at now, but looking at other districts and if things don't change over the next, you know, three, four, five years, you are looking at the structure of the district in terms of can you provide everything that you want to provide or that we're currently providing, so.
I just kind of played also that if, you know, we go for operating levy, can we decide to go that route? It's going to be happen to the next school year before we go.
You know, so I think it would, we'd be prudent to have alternative ideas, buckets, places. As you mentioned, you don't want to threaten it, but you certainly got to give them, these are going to be consequences of this or that. And then added revenue is a, is a better solution than making drastic cuts. It might not be the only solution or might not solve us all the way, you know, in the future, as you mentioned, Joe. But I think it's a wise choice for it.
I hear you, I tend to agree.
There's a fine line between being threatening to be transparent.
Exactly, transparency is what, it's been, every time, my short little stand here gives me very transparency. It's the goal, right?
Do you know when we're going to have a local study proposal?
Yep. Later this evening, I'm going to give you a copy of it. Received it, read it finally, yeah, we got it Friday evening, so. And if there was something that I thought would change our course of this, we probably would have rushed it, but.
Shred this presentation.
Ten thousand superstitious.
Never mind.
No, no, it's, uh, it's interesting. I think the things that we've said where we're seeing a little bit of lessening of that trend may sustain for the next few years. We're still may not be at the bottom of the, the birth rates impacting our kindergarteners, however. And it was preliminary, remember I said I had birth, this is, I never thought I'd be talking about these things in my job. Hey, the birth rates for twenty twenty-three in Scott County were more of the same. Twenty twenty-four, they actually show an increase, but it's preliminary data. So, but there, there, there could be, or yeah, so there, but I'll share that and just thought if there, it, it's more in line with a lot of things. We knew birth rates are the driving force and have been charter schools, the increase in students and families choosing charter schools are there. The number of students open enrolling in has increased. The number of students open and rolling out of Shakopee has also increased. And there's other pieces in there, but I'll give you that and you can dig into that if you get questions, concerns. And that will certainly happy to, you know, happy to communicate between now and June twenty-third. But it's hot off the presses and it really, I think what we were doing, if you remember last time we went back to Hazel and went, hey, we need more, this doesn't seem right, this, this at least kind of first read seems, yeah, there wasn't anything glaring. And that doesn't mean we won't find an error or something. And in fact, if you do and upon reading it, please let me know. Check that out, go back to Hazel. But we kind of looking at our projections and the numbers seem, there doesn't seem to be anything misaligned, but we might have missed something today.
So the plan then is to have this as an action item at our next board meeting on June twenty-third? Is that what we're hearing?
When would we have to file with the Secretary of State to have it on the ballot?
We have time. I think we've always targeted the June twenty-third because it gives us time if the board has decided, and I'll give you one example. Because we've been, you know, as you've been talking about these, I've been going to Bill Manassi and going, hey, please talk to our, you know, PMA, our, our financial consultants. One of the questions is to go to the cap. And you'll notice some of the numbers in those projections from PMA change a little bit. Some of that's enrollment driven, some of that is, hey, they're getting the updated kind of data from the state on inflation and things. I've learned MDE does not do the calculation for exactly what the cap will be until, I think they have it available by June thirtieth. So we don't expect to have that by June twenty-third. So we could do a question one and we would know what the numbers are and the per pupil, but we wouldn't, you know, and we could approve a, you know, so that we could approve just like what we've done previously with an operating levy, have the full, full-blown resolution and all of those type of things. But to go to the cap, I think what the leadership team would present to the board would be a, you know, an action item that says, yes, that's our desire to go to the cap. The understanding would be that we would come back with the exact numbers. We're, we're going to be within a, you know, a few dollars in per pupil expenditure costs. But we would come back with that exact numbers and that exact language then at the July twenty-eighth meeting, which means the deadline, I'm looking at Tiffany again. But that, just doing that June twenty-third helps with all that preparation work. Yes, we wouldn't have the exact numbers, for example, for the question two. But everything else you can start to put in place, there's ballot language, there's all kinds of other pieces. There's, you know, election site and all those, you know, they're just a tremendous amount of work, which to get, get that moving. And I think it also, and again, it's why we had the special board meeting on June fourth. It also helps us to communicate for an additional amount of time with the knowledge of, hey, what is? This is what's expected on the ballot on November fourth, which people then will frame more, you know, more exact questions. And then it allows us, the board's direction is, hey, start doing work and, and creating kind of draft proposals of what budget cuts would look like. We're not going to say happy to do that work, but that's our job and we'll do that to the best of our ability in a timely fashion as well, so.
Are we managing the election or is the county managing the election? I know it's, it would probably be the only thing on the ballot, but, and the last time we had to manage it?
We are in charge of it, but we have worked over the last couple of years with the county. And I believe they will be much, a much greater, much more coordinated effort and support from the election experts at the county. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Get me in with a little stress, so.
It's still a lot of responsibility. But if, if you remember, they had just kind of implemented new processes and our timing probably couldn't have been worse. We're now, you know, there are a whole lot, lot of things and even, you know, some of the record keeping and that, that we've been, that, that conversation has been ongoing probably since twenty twenty-one.
And if I, I'm a Director of Administration, the county is really fantastic. They're looking at how they can support various school districts that are in situations and integrity of these special elections that are technically the responsibility of a school district, but how they can support. A lot of that is removing a lot of manual elements that did make it so tedious and you want to get everything right. And how they can provide the proper connection between the school district and them without being an employee. And they've done a lot of things in the past three months that I think would, would make that a lot easier with things like pole pads. If you live in that world and you know some of their systems that they have out there, trying to make it so that it's, the integrity is always the same, but it's easier for us to administer.
And if you want site, pole inside, western school?
So as I understand this, the next meeting, we're going to basically decide whether to go for an operating levy? And then the parameters of that will be for July?
Yeah.
Decide whether we're going to go one, two.
Oh, no, sorry, then I, I've got your work there. I think, and, and this action is just going to ask this question of the board and so by, you know, however we want to handle that, it could be a knot in the head. But from the district leadership perspective, what I've heard us say or talk about is we should prepare a proposal that would have, you know, the three million in expenditure reductions. We should prepare a question one, operating levy question for six hundred and twenty dollars per pupil. And we should also prepare for a two-point, you know, roughly two point three million question two of an operating levy. And then begin to do some planning for if question one didn't pass, what would those budget cuts be like? So I think that's. And we would do question one, we could do exactly. Question two, we have a pretty good idea, but we would have to finalize the dollar amounts and the language for July twenty-eighth.
The two eighty-eight is the, is the cap that we know of, what the cap could change from two ninety-eight to two ninety-five, right?
Yeah, part of my thought was two, and then, and yeah, it's sitting near that end. But having the two-point question, whether that's realistically a great option, whether we just have one option to go to the cap. I mean, if you give two questions, I don't know how like it is the second gets broken.
Well, the, I think the, the reason is question one by itself can, can be presented as tax neutral. And that's, that's a big, that's a big draw.
And if Shakopee's tax bases, we've talked about before, there's a lot of communities asking for this kind of money that has a far more significant impact to the per household basis. And in the sake of looking at the future for our taxpayers, our school district, there's an expense to running this, having another election three years from now, to get that last two and a half million dollars. I don't know if it makes sense. I, I don't want to blow our opportunity at this tax neutral opportunity, but at the same time, that can be part of the story to the community or, or the information that we're providing, it mitigates the actual cost.
So, and I'm, and I'm right there with you, Nick. The concern is, and this is again, Bill needs to speak to it. Whether, if it's approved, right, this, it's actually the following year's money. So if you don't get the five million now, the tax neutral, you, you're a year out, so you have to make cuts until that, that revenue comes in for the following year, right? And so the.
Wait, wait a second, no, no, if it passes.
If it, if it passes this year, you're fine because then the money's.
Yes.
Through the taxation. But if it doesn't pass this year, if you put it as one question and it doesn't pass, you just miss your opportunity to have that five million for the following. you just miss your opportunity to have that five million for the following school year. You still have to go back and levy for it again. Such as what I'm saying is, you, you run the risk of taking that five million dollars down the road, the tax neutral piece.
There might be people who would be, okay, I'm fine on one, but not on two.
On two.
But if you decide to do it all as one, they're like, you know, I, I can't afford this.
Exactly.
Because it is going to be a taxing race and not tax neutral. I would, I personally would rather see two questions just because if the second one fails, there's always opportunities in the future. If the first one fails, or if you do it all together, so the 26, 27 is going to be rough.
Chair Smith, if I might just, yeah, because two thoughts. And we could, you know, if the board wants, obviously, if you want to kind of flesh it out more, great. But I would, I would just offer that, you know, I think good discussion. What I suggested bringing forward doesn't mean that can't be changed. Pretty, pretty easy to change it from a two question thought to a one question thought on the 23rd. We would have, we'd have the same challenge that if we're going to the cap, we need that. We won't have the data from MDE until June 30th. We're hoping to have it by then. But in terms of that, that's, that's really doable on June 23rd, and so.
And if we worded it as a cap, the cap does change for your year going forward?
Well, if we word it as the cap, they're going to give us the tax estimates and all that data for this year. We would also, and again, making the assumption because it's what we've done in the past, we would word that, that it would be adjusted by inflation, which is what our current operating levy does. It's what our current capital projects levy does. And then they do the automatic adjustment. The only reason we would delay from June 23rd to July 28th for whether it's a question two going to the cap, we only have a pretty good estimate of what that is, the 200, what is it, $288 per pupil? Once MDE comes out with that by June 30th, we will have a much more exact number. It might be $285 per pupil or 291 or something in that range. And really what that does is now you are right at where the cap is based on those numbers. We're right now, it's just an estimate. And we can't levy above the cap. So if we were going to approve the language on June 23rd, we would want to be a little more cautious and be whatever, 10, $20 per pupil below the cap. We've always talked about it as the cap. So that's why we dug into that, did some research and just to know how that process would work, so. Again, I think it.
We wouldn't use the language to cap.
No, we might, we might have presentations, but it would ultimately be more about the dollar amount. And then what is most important to the community? You know, what is, what is, what is the tax impact on various levels of property?
Right.
And we've got, I mean, some of that data is on, you know, we've shared that, it's on the presentation. But, you know, so I think we're within, you know, my point, we're within that range of having the discussion, you know, on June 23rd and time to prepare between now and then too for our board members. If, if that's what the board would like.
Any further discussion? We, we still have, we still have a lot ahead yet, so. Not trying to discourage anybody. Just making sure you.
I mean transparent.
Didn't sound that way at all.
All right, thank you, Dr. Redmond. Good discussion. Next is item 11, committee reports and other information. I will start just so everybody's aware. This is going to blend into the upcoming meetings, but I want to just make sure everybody's aware. We've been talking, in the personnel committee, we talked about doing MSBA phase three and phase four training. And Christie is the only one on the board who's actually completed it. So we, we all are strongly encouraged to complete it. We're looking at dates in August potentially to bring a, a professional from MSBA here to Shockbeat to conduct the training. The hope would be that all of us would be able to participate. And we had floated, what, August, August 16th? It's a Saturday, that's a potential day. And we're already seeing a note from Jill, but.
Well, if I want to stay married, I'm my 28th, 29th month.
So we can, we can, we can communicate rather than, and spend too much time tonight discussing about it. We can, we can float some dates out and, and discuss through, through email. But the goal would be to, and it would be as far as we know right now, all day on Saturday, a full day. And it would be phase three and four together on that one day, if we can make, if we can make that work. But the goal would be for all of us to be available for it. So more to come on that since we already have a conflict with, with August 16th. And I know Saturday's bad in the mornings for, for Mount Viking and, and, you know, other people probably have some things. But hopefully if we get a day that, that mostly works, that people can adjust. So more, more to come on that. But it's a great opportunity for all of us to get that completed and to do it together. So there, it's a, it's a collective board development event together for us. So I really hope we can make that work.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if we can't get everybody on a date, then it does, it kind of defeats the purpose. I'll bring in somebody here from MSBA, so.
I think that was something to excuse. Let me say in August, it's really tough.
Otherwise, for me, graduation was, was awesome on Saturday as always. Such a joy and inspiring to see our future leaders. And, yeah, just what more can you say? Go to Jim next.
You know, it's always the high, high energy, the rapid fire, like, seems like the, the names picked up for the back third of the event, but, oh, you know.
We're not going to name names, Jen, Abios.
One of the shorter graduations, I think I said.
Yeah. So just one of the highlights given on the board.
Yeah, I don't think I have, we haven't met for a committee meeting for a while. So we didn't have anything to report there. And I know it was policy, there was the public emails about that, policy five, whatever. We don't know about that, so.
Graduation and Chad and I were at Catta on Thursday. And they had 11 graduates there. And I, for those who have been there, it's such a great ceremony. And, and it almost lasted as long as the one on Saturday. But just to have all the teachers, the teachers talk about the, the graduate's journey. And there was one graduate who, who reached all his credits about 20 minutes before the ceremony. So that was, you know, up to the last minute.
Finished his last math assignment.
That's awesome. Yeah, it was, so that, that's a great one. And I know it has nothing to do with, with, with school or anything, but my parents are walking. Happy 71st wedding anniversary. Because I will be at 28 and I'm like, that's forty percent of what they've gone through. And it's just, and they're, and they're still the cutest couple I've ever seen. At, at their age, so that's just, I just had to say that. That's awesome.
Christie?
Yeah, just graduation was great as always. And then personal sign, something special was only coming up on Tuesday, it's Tuesday.
Caroline?
Yeah, just personal sign and wonderful graduation. So glad I got this, Michelle.
Nick? I unfortunately didn't have my calendar cleared for graduation, so I failed to join for all the ceremonies going forward. I don't, you know, as a school board member. A lot of things, it's been a while, it seems like since I've been here, but like literacy night was an awesome one. I have the green edge, it's awesome, and that. Community Ed, we met, they're always looking for more members to join the community group. So if you know anybody in the community that would like to get some input on class offerings and things like that, it's kind of a fun, like à la carte, what do you want to see? It's about literally passing it or whatever, you know, so. That was fun. One other day that I'd bring up that I've experienced is also at the elementary level, we went and did the track and field day, which is something that I did as a kid. Everybody loves it, the kids love it, the parents love it, the teachers love it, the tug of war, all that stuff. And general consensus was a sadness that it will probably be the last time we're going to do that. So that was a decision we made here at the board. I just wanted to bring that up, that hopefully there's a potential that the administration could work with the elementary folks to bring that back. But that was one of the experiences I felt in my school.
Michelle?
Yeah, actually, I can have some closing remarks as this is my last week. I had to prepare a little bit of something. But I mean, just before I opened that up, I mean, obviously graduation was amazing. And it was kind of surreal to kind of walk the stage and finally grab my performance. Well, not the performance, but the case of it, I guess. But yeah, I just, so I actually did write something up, so. So I want to say first of all, thank you all for inviting me into the school board and for letting me be part of the school board, that's kind of been on that since my 10th grade year. And while my experience has been something I will never truly forget about over the last two years or kind of like two years and a half of my service, there's kind of some things like I wanted to point out just for the future. To those of you who care for the students, Diki, I can, I know, thank you. But there are some I realized might have infantilized the DTO or Shawna or myself, who might have utilized logical fallacies to convince others, who tried to sway opinions, those who began communication for projects but never went through with it, those who used biurification to enable and defend that bureaucracy that plagues our school district, those who exert unprofessional power and who flaunted certain decisions and programs for PR. For the adults who made a promise to those kids after having student representatives join the board and did not fully threshold such goals out. This is certainly not everybody in the room, and in fact, it's not even the majority. But for those who this to apply, I ask you, I urge you, do not make the same mistakes for my successors, Shawna and Brian. Listen to them not only with your ears, but with your words and your actions. The student population is counting on you all.
Yeah, in the name of being different, we're, I'd like to thank all of our community partners who are hosting the picnic with the police tonight. I think it's, it's wrapping up as we sit here, but it's such an incredible opportunity for our families heading into summer. And it's such a just great opportunity for the community to come together. And we couldn't make it this year, but I know we've got folks from the enrollment center who are representing Shockbeat Public Schools to support our families.
Tiffany?
I'll echo the picnic with the police. So we have our, our student intern there and also Pearson Early Learning Center to help engage with our littles. They said it was windy, but it was very well attended, so it's great for that. There's been some good partnerships and appreciate Mr. McClosage setting up conversations continued with the county where you should see in the coming months, the read mobile through the county, utilizing some screening equipment to actually screen families where they are at and going to our families and trying things to really create good bonds at a young age. And we have our leadership retreat coming up next week. And there's been a lot of work put into that with some really great focal areas that are not new. It's just continuing on and appreciate Dr. Redmond and Mr. McClosage for really taking time to make that meaningful with the leaders that'll be in attendance.
Dr. Redmond?
I think I've spoken enough, other than, you know, Zappi Catta graduation and Shockbeat High School graduation. It's always an amazing time and well done events at both places.
With that, we'll look at the next item on the agenda is upcoming meetings and important dates. You can see on the screen there. I don't know if there's anything anyone wants to bring attention to. Coffee with the superintendent on the 12th. All right, and with that, I've done this once before and I'm trying to remember to do how to do it the exact way. I don't know if we, if we, we need to adjourn or if we can do a recess.
Do we do a motion to move to?
A motion to go into closed session.
All right, so, so the, Tandy, we're going to go into closed session to prepare, to conduct discussions in preparation for our SEA negotiations, which I'll start next week. So I would entertain a motion, if you're certain.
No, I'm guessing you're going to make the statement after that. The only thing we're going to come back to is adjourn on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion in this special session.
So a motion by Brophy and a second by Peterson in further discussion. See none, all of us in favor? Aye, opposed?